I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, next, I have is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Okay, um, should I?
I'd go ahead and second that.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We've been asked to remove the date and time for the public hearing on proposed amendment to Harden County zoning ordinance number 29.
Okay.
Would you like that put in there or do you just want to table it for later?
Um, I think I'll just address it when we get to item number 10 and act on it then.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of 3:25, 2020.
I will make a motion to approve the March 25th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is approval of claims for payment of 4:1, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 1st, 2020, claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? It's not a joke, right?
No.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is utility permits, secondary roads. I have a utility permit here.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve utility permit UT F-0-013 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, this is for flood gauge or sensor, Iowa Flood Center strain gauge sensor to be placed in a waterway.
On Highway 20, D-20, I mean.
D-20, correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Taylor, you got anything for us?
Uh, no, we're fully staffed at the moment. Everybody's back at work, so things are business as usual for us. Hopefully it doesn't snow on Friday.
I hope you're right.
Yes, exactly.
Um, now that I got you on the line here, why don't we move right to the next one, the Iowa DOT budget, you want to talk about that?
Sure, this is just, uh, I have to send all this to the DOT. The numbers are the exact same thing that you approved in your budget last week.
And would you like to talk about the five-year construction program as well before we move into these?
Yeah, that's fine, we can go straight to that. So, the five-year program, uh, there's a few pages to it and then I sent some PowerPoint slides to Jessica, she could show you, and it just kind of highlights, uh, the projects that we have for each year. Uh, we managed to come into an extra $216,000 from our bridge replacement fund. Uh, the state of Iowa had some money, oh, I don't even remember the amount, but, uh, we decided as the counties, we split it up amongst all the counties, so we got 200 grand. So that should help us get at least, uh, one more bridge done. So, we also have the problem of a lot of our bridges are on paved roads that are failing right now, so that means that unfortunately we have to set some of the gravel road ones to the side. I don't like doing that, but we don't really have that much of a choice.
From there, would you like to talk about your bridge weight limit postings?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Who do I? Who do I have here, Donna?
Yes, sir.
Donna, go ahead and ask your question.
When you say some of the side roads are going to have to be laid to the side, what do you mean by that?
Gravel roads.
So, we're not going to continue adding rock to them?
Bridge.
No, we're talking about bridges.
Okay.
Yep, I think I only have two bridges on non-paved roads in our five-year plan.
Uh, possible, uh, one of them is on X. Thank you.
Yep. Taylor, you want to go ahead and go with, talk about the bridge weight limit postings as well?
Yep, that's fine, so we just got those from our bridge inspector, um, all their recommendations. Uh, there's only two new ones and then some changes, so I prepared some slides for all the changes. Uh, the first change is our, we call it Bridge 2238. It's on 130th Street, east of Iowa Falls, and it's being lowered from 25 tons to 20 tons. Uh, it's mostly a residential road. I don't see it being a big problem, I mean, they're already used to the 25 tons. Uh, the next one is a new posting, it's Bridge 7343. It's on 195th Street, just southeast of Alwassa. It is a two-and-a-half mile stretch of road. Uh, we're posting at 20 tons. That's going to be very inconvenient for people on a two-and-a-half mile stretch of road, but we don't have much of a choice either. Your next bridge, also a new posting, is just northwest of Eldora on 215th Street. Uh, I don't know if a lot of Eldora comes in that way, it has, it's kind of the route to that paved zigzag road of where Washington Street goes all the way north.
What number, what number is that bridge?
8264A. That will be posted at 25 tons. It should be just west of the new bike trail culvert that we did last year.
Is that, that's not going up north on North Washington and then around those curves, is it, or is it the one that goes by the county shed?
No, yep, it's around, up Washington and around the curve, yes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the next one isn't too bad because, uh, we have to close a bridge on 245th by NN, be south of 100, uh, Highway 175, but my contractor wants to begin work in two weeks, so, uh, this one shouldn't be too bad to close that for just a couple weeks and then to replace it.
Which one is that?
10259.
Okay.
Next is Bridge 15263, uh, will be, this is the one I put on Facebook yesterday, uh, one of the wooden bridge piers was hit by some driftwood. We don't exactly know when, but, uh, so now your one pier on the upstream part has, uh, zero, zero weight bearing abilities. So, we are ordered to close the west forefoot of the bridge until a repair happens, and then once we can repair it, it'll still need to be posted at 20-ton weight limit.
Which one was that again?
15263.
Okay.
It's on QQ, uh, south of New Providence. Um, then I got two that fit on the same map. We got Bridge 15301 and then a culvert 15523. The bridge is on T Avenue, south of D-65. Uh, it's being lowered to 20 tons for two axle vehicles and 30 tons for three axles or more. And the culverts on 335th between S and T, we're lowering that to 10 tons for all vehicles. Uh, both of those are on our five-year plan, so those shouldn't be too big of a concern since we know that we will be taking care of them in the near future. And my last new one is, uh, Bridge 15391. It's on, uh, Level B Road, 330th Street, uh, southeast of Hubbard. Uh, the only thing on the road, there's one hog confinement to the east and that's how they get there, so I, I don't really know who drives up and down the road other than the local farmers, so they should already be used to it. I think it has a 20-ton limit right now.
Okay.
Any questions?
Other than that, other than that, all the ones in the resolution are the same as they were, or we've already fixed them and those would be mentioned as well.
Okay.
Any questions? Well, I'm going to go back up to the approval of secondary roads Iowa DOT budget 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary roads DOT budget for 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. This is Donna.
Donna, what's your question?
Um, on the receipts from property tax levied, levies, what portion, what, what percentage that the state allows is being used for this, for all county?
Currently? 100?
On this budget?
In, in this current budget, 100% has been levied.
And what about for rural properties?
100% of rural services and general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is the approval of secondary roads five-year construction program.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the Harden County Secondary Roads five-year construction program as presented by Engineer Rawl.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Obviously, this could move from time to time if he needs to. We don't know what's going to happen, if something happens two years, anything can move around, but it is a construction plan.
With the possibility of the FEMA reimbursement as well, that might change things at some point as well.
Yep.
Yeah, this is Taylor. Our current biggest concern is that with all this going on right now, people aren't driving around, so we are worried that, you know, the majority of our money comes from road use tax, so if people aren't driving around, that, that could potentially hurt us in the future.
So what you're saying is gas is cheap, drive around?
That'd be great.
I'm just kidding. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have is the resolution for the bridge embargoes.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for bridge weight limit postings.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we have this on the agenda to set the date and time for the public hearing on proposed amendments to Harden County zoning ordinance number 29. We've been asked to have this removed and be brought back to us next week.
Hey Lance, I'll make a motion to table the, the item to set the date and time for Harden County zoning ordinance number 29.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next is merge workforce development region six with region 15. We did this a couple weeks ago with region 10. In order to merge, all counties need to agree to it. I believe one county did not, so region 10 was not going to work for us. Now we need to do it again for region 15, so to put six and 15 together if you guys so choose.
I would make a motion to approve the merge workforce development region six with region 15.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Once all the counties agree upon this, and then the state needs to agree upon it, and then we can start working on a 20/80. So it's kind of a process, but hopefully we can get through it. Any other discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is request from Rural Iowa Waste Management Association to be added to the Avisis Plan.
Um, I spoke with the auditor's office, um, I know there's been past years where it's been a question as whether or not we should continue with Avisis, um, and I know there are some issues with administering that, that, um, plan, and so at this time, I think I'm going to make the motion to deny the request from Rural Iowa Waste Management Association to be added to the Avisis Plan at this time.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Uh, Ray, Lance, this is Lance.
Yeah.
Are we going to look at maybe doing some other different type of vision plan if we get away from Avisis?
Uh, we talked about it every year, we haven't done it yet, um, we need to.
I, I'm thinking through our health insurance, we already have an, a vision screening each year that's, that's provided by our regular health insurance.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Can you help me with?
I don't know if it also includes anything for the purchase of glasses or contacts or anything like that, I don't, not that I'm aware of, but I, I cannot say that for sure.
Yeah, no, they don't.
Okay.
They don't, because I have the Avisis, I have the Avisis Plan and, um, they do give some money for frames and contacts and stuff, so I didn't know if we were looking at somebody different, getting, getting away from Avisis, or will they're, if we're going to make a change, or what they're dealing with.
We don't know yet.
Yeah, we haven't really discussed anything regarding the Avisis Plan, but at this time we just don't want to have other people come on and then, you know, if something changes, and it is kind of a administration nightmare, from what I understand, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I understand.
So, that might be something we can discuss in the future as far as finding something else that, that might be out there.
Yep, I, I'm good.
Thank you.
Becca says she thinks that would be something we can talk with IGHCP about.
Okay.
And then she said she's pretty sure they have options.
So Becca, Becca came online and she says she, she thinks that this would be something we can talk with IGHCP with? For those that couldn't hear what the comment was.
Okay.
Well, moving on, thank you Wes. I, I do want to go to the resolution to adopt the COV ID 19 response policy, we had What, what are your inputs? I believe that first option that we had was not a very good option.
Yeah, I, I think we should narrow it down to a decision between option two and option three at this point in time, um, so we could.
Um, BJ asked if, I think, this is, this is item 13?
Yeah.
Okay, he asked if we could unmute the department heads in virtual, so we'll do that.
Okay.
So they can each, I'll do Daryl first. Daryl, can you, you hear us?
Daryl, can you hear us? Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, Daryl.
Renee, I, okay, I, I agree that the first option, um, as, when it was drafted, uh, was subsequently superseded by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, so it is not so long viable. And so, then I received from Allers and Cooney that option two, the single-page policy, and then a few days later I received the more comprehensive, uh, option, which is a, I think about a six-page document. It also, uh, includes language that incorporates the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, dealing with sick leave and, and, uh, those provisions, also with the, uh, amended Family Medical Leave Act that addresses coronavirus. So that, that, a part of the reason why it was called a comprehensive policy, it also addresses other sort of loose ends incorporating some of the guidelines from FEMA, uh, with the Department of Public Health that, um, uh, identified from the CDC, under what circumstances, um, employees should be asked to stay home, et cetera, so that, it kind of tries to bring in all the things that have kind of been developing over the last, uh, week and a half into this comprehensive plan, and so I think it's probably the best one, because in one document it incorporates, uh, what's been happening on the federal level, as well as what we want to, uh, do for giving our payroll and our employees guidance here locally.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, move to the next one.
I, I have a question. This is Donna.
Donna, Donna, why, I want to run through all our department heads first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jessica? Yeah.
Jessica?
Yeah.
All right. Did you have any comments?
Um, regarding my feelings on it and those of my staff, I think I second what Daryl said and go with the comprehensive policy.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Lori can't talk. She doesn't have a video camera, so she doesn't have a microphone.
Laurie, would you like to type your comments in? If any?
Lynn, you are, you should be up. Okay, um, yeah, and I've reviewed these more and I guess of the three, you know, I would be, probably you'll give us the third one, but I did have a couple of these questions and a comment, I guess my biggest concern would be on page six, um, because it looked like, you know, somebody added a section there, somebody did that on a section there, um, but it contradicts itself in the third paragraph, in the third paragraph, it says that if you take non-essential travel, it says you're required to use vacation, personal leave, and sick leave during that time, but yet in the next paragraph, to me it seems to indicate there that you can't use your sick leave. Um, so I guess if you were going to adopt this policy, I think that needs to be clarified, and I would hope that you would allow people that were sick to use their sick leaves. And then I had a couple of questions on the first page, under action, the part that's yellow, um, it says in department office staff, I don't know, does that refer to the engineer's department staff, or does that, does that mean all department, office staff? So I, I would think maybe that should be clarified. And then on the page two, it refers, it talks about in the yellow part at 40 hours per week, that, as we all know, most of our courthouse and, and, you know, county office building staff work 37 and a half, so I don't know if that's just assumed since it's a 40 max or if that needs to be added. And then I wondered about the form in paragraph five, it talks about a work-from-home agreement, and I didn't know if that was available, or if that should be part of the policy.
Well, and I had a question, I had a question on that too, because it says, "in writing by the county supervisors," and I'm wondering if that shouldn't be their department head, but as long as you were in the same paragraph.
That makes more sense, and then my other, my only other.
That was for overtime.
Travel, um, but it defines non-essential and essential, I mean, is that, can we legally, even though we all know, you know, we shouldn't travel to areas and all this stuff, and hopefully we're following that, but can you legally do that? And, and is that only during, during your work time, or are they saying, you know, in the evening, if my daughter lives in Des Moines, and very sick, and I needed to go to Des Moines, you know, I assume that would be non-essential travel, but is that off-hours or is that just during work time?
Daryl, would you like to address these?
Yeah, I tried to keep up with, Lynn, you bring me back to anything that, uh, I forget that you mentioned, but I'll start with the last thing first. This travel is only work-related travel, this is not a restriction on your personal travel, so I, I, if that answers your question about that, this is just regulating employee behavior during work hours as part of their job. Uh, so now, if we go back to the first, uh, point you raised, the difference between, uh, the travel out, you know, non-essential travel, um, there's, there's, if you're already, I think the difference between the, the distinction is, uh, you, some people may be out of compliance as we speak, and once this is adopted, there's a policy for them, that's where it grandfather's them in, as opposed to going forward, if you, uh, if an employee participates or engages in non-essential unauthorized, unapproved travel, that would be out of compliance with this policy, then these other, um, you know, ha- having them stay home and how we're going to account for that is different, because they're, um, choosing, as we, as we go forward, they've chosen to violate this policy, so there's a different way of accounting that, designed more to discourage, um, people from traveling without getting permission first. Does that clarify that?
Well, I, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but I still think if you read that, the first paragraph down to the last sentence, prior to that last sentence, and then you look at that and compare it with the next paragraph, they think they're incongruent, they don't say the same thing, but maybe I'm reading it wrong, so I just wanted to.
You're on page six, right?
Right, because it just says if anyone engages in non-essential travel, you will be required to self-isolate, and then it says you will only be allowed to return to work if symptoms and fever free, and then it says you're required to use vacation, personal leave, and sick leave during this time, but then the next paragraph says if you engage in non-essential travel, you, it doesn't list sick leave, it only lists vacation and comp time, and no sick leave.
Right, and in the first instance, it's where you're already, see, anyone engaged in, so they're already engaged in it prior to us adopting this policy.
Yeah, I don't think I understood that, maybe that should be clarified, just maybe if you just added a word or two there, that, you know, for anyone engaged in, if it was part of the policy or something, maybe that would clarify that.
Or currently engaged, or something.
And I think if someone is engaged in non-essential travel but had, have been authorized to do it, um, after this policy has been adopted, then the first paragraph would apply. It's only for those folks that are engaging in non-essential travel without authorization, there's, there's more of a penalty, so to speak, uh, put in there to deter unapproved non-essential travel, so there's the distinction, is what, um... So there's the distinction is what we're trying to accomplish with that. If it needs a little extra clarity, we can try to provide that.
Okay, now I think, now I understand the intent, but yeah, I think it needs a little. Or you could just, in the second paragraph, you could add, you know, add up the date of the adoption of the policy or something, that might help too.
Okay. All right, let's see. Well, no, you have a few more things, and I think you went up to page one. Department office staff.
Yeah.
Emergency service personnel. And later, there's some language that talks about who's exempt from this. And that they included dispatch, and so I was just trying to broaden this definition here a little bit to capture those folks that are playing a supportive role, that aren't necessarily going out in the field and dealing with the public as an emergency personnel, but might be providing a support role like dispatch and those folks. So that's why I was, I just kind of broadened it and included the language department office staff. Because that's just related to-
It's just referring into those like the sheriff and the county health, and all, okay.
Okay, so that's not referring to everybody, or all departments then? Correct?
Maybe you could add the word "their," and "their" department staff, maybe that would clarify that it's referring to those specific departments.
All right.
So you're saying then that this does not pertain to any of the offices in the courthouse? As far as being essential? I just want to clarify that.
Well, I guess that's for us to decide, how broad do we want this to apply? If you want it to include, I mean, if it includes everybody, then there's no need to even-
Right.
-have any language.
I mean, I tend to agree with you, Daryl, right now, with what we're in the middle of, I can't say that the departments in the courthouse are essential. I mean, if we all had to close and go home today, I think that, I think most of those departments could do that without a lot of repercussions, or maybe some buildup of work when they come back. But yeah, you definitely can't do without the sheriff's department, the detentions, the jail, solid waste, road maintenance, and those types of things. I mean, as essential as we all think we are, we're really not when it comes down to something like this.
Well, I think, I think the offices are essential, but maybe to remain fully staffed under the circumstances might not be essential. So maybe we just have to leave that up to department heads to make that determination. We could, we could change the language to department office staff as established or determined by department heads. Because they have, everybody would have their own idea of what, you know, what the workload is currently with all the restrictions, and given the lighter workloads, maybe not everyone is as essential as they otherwise would be.
Well, and Thomas has provided a comment that says, remember the continuity of government that's been stated, so that is true also. And also Matt made the comment to reconsider when it comes to IT. How come I'm getting so much feedback? So yeah, IT is definitely, I mean, that's what keeps our jail and sheriff's department going too, so.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. Becca, are you on? Or Jessica in the auditor's office? How important is it that we adopt this now so that you folks know what to do payroll-wise and for the other department heads, what your employees need to know going forward, how this is going to work? I know that they need that information, you need that information. Can this wait another week? Or should we try to adopt this knowing that we're going to make some minor changes as we're talking about it right here? And adopt it knowing that those changes are going to be made?
Is Becca unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think that even if you adopted this, I think you'd have to make changes to it anyway, even if we liked everything on it, because the situation is fluid and never changing. So I think it's nice to have something in place as a guideline and then just say, okay, now let's do this and make changes. But if you don't adopt it, I don't think it's the end of the world either if we wait. I don't want to keep postponing it, I don't know how Becca feels about it, but like, we can still have the ability to go back and enter things regarding leave time after the fact. It gets kind of messy when you go to look at the record-keeping, but like, if you made some policy that said if you're not in your seat at work and you're working from home, I want it reflected in payroll as code XYZ or something, we can go back and change that, and that's not a problem, it just creates more legwork after the fact. So that's why I would like a policy beforehand. I'm pretty sure Becca would agree. But we also understand that the situation is ever-changing, and if you delayed it one week, I don't think it's going to create an extra hardship to get it right. But I think that even if you adopted it now, it would be fine for you to come back and do amendments to it next week. That's my opinion.
A week from now, the state may go from 500 to 1,000, who knows? Hardin County may go from a few to dozens. A week under these circumstances, I think, is huge. And I'd rather see us adopt this and then tweak it. That'd be my recommendation. And as far as a work-from-home agreement, I will check with Allers and Cooney, but I'm assuming it's going to include something about how to report the hours that you're working from home, some do's and don'ts about security, county property, healing the public on your own private property, confidentiality, and other viability issues. But I think, just because how rapidly things are changing, I think adopting this now and then making adjustments is inevitable, but I think it would be the best course to take.
Okay. Dave McDaniel put, to put this in place, also gives us a point in the sand to work from if this causes cost to be reported for FEMA reimbursement.
So put it in place.
Put it in place.
Do we want more comments?
Were there any other department heads?
Yeah, this is lots again. I agree with getting something in place, like everybody else said. Is there a form that we're going to need to be having people fill out to, that are going to be working from home? Or is that going to be turned forth later?
If you're asking me in the auditor's office, we don't have a form, but I think we were the first office to go to work from home part-time while we're not staffed in our office. And as of right now, I have not made my people keep track of the projects or anything that they were working on. I just assume that they know that they need to be working on work, and as long as the work is done, then they can obviously show that they-
Becca has a comment, too.
So I don't have a form right now.
Okay, I just, you know, in that policy, there's, it mentions a form, so I didn't know if that was going to be forthcoming if this gets adopted today or what. That's what, that's my main question was, but I do like the third form.
I'm sure that's something that could be added possibly next week or whenever. I'm sure Daryl can come up with something for that, for that too. I mean, he mentioned some guidelines for working from home, so I would think that that would be something that could be added to that.
Yeah, well, if this is adopted today, I'll get right on that work-from-home agreement, and there may be some suggested form that those working from home would have to fill out, or maybe all the department heads could come up with their own, but we could suggest something that they use, but the work-from-home agreement would be something I could probably get put together yet this week.
Becca said she has some, she'll get them to you?
And Thomas also has one, so.
Okay. The other question I had was, with my staff, some of the staff can work independently and on their own and still maintain parks and keep them open, so if there's a set home order, I don't know if there's a way we could be exempted from that, or some of the staff, my staff could be exempted from that to continue doing what they're doing, because they really, they have very limited interaction, or they can have very limited interaction with the public, you know, and still maintain, still maintain properties and things like that.
I haven't heard from Michelle yet. Thank you, Wes. Michelle?
Most of my things were addressed by everybody else, the same questions that everybody else had, but just that, the hours of the 40 hours, that 37 and a half hour employees, I think that would need to be added or something. And then my other thing was wanting that agreement to be that, what that was. And then making sure that I'd be able to continue to go to the office, to be able to, a lot of stuff I can do at home, but a lot we can't do at home. So I have to have some continuity if there's not a total shutdown, to be able to still continue to go in to get the tax authorities paid their monies that they need to operate on. If we go to a full-down shutdown in the next fourteen days, I need to be able to have the capability of getting the monies to the taxing authorities.
That's true.
And keep collecting. If there's a case where we can't go to the courthouse, then I need authority to be able to bring those things to my home. If I have to do it myself, I'll be happy to do that, but I need authority not to break the rules and things of leaving possession checks and documents and things. I don't bring those home, and I shouldn't. But in a case of the worst scenario, I feel like I need some kind of authority that I would be able to do that.
Michelle, this is Daryl. I don't think that the policy would prevent you from doing the things that you've just mentioned. And just, and as one of the tweaks, we should include department heads as an essential employee, so we could include elected officials and department heads in that. This isn't, I don't want anybody that's participating, listening, you know, from home here to think that this is a plan for government shutdown, and it's not. It's a plan to keep services available, and it's not in any way preventing you or any other department head from going in and doing what they have to do with whoever they determine to be an essential employee to assist in that. It's just if people are exposed or want to self-isolate, even if they haven't been exposed, this helps us address that from a payroll perspective.
And I understand that part of it. I just, I'm looking to the future because I could see the handwriting on the wall that we're going to go to a statewide lockdown. It could happen, I just, I don't know.
So in a statewide lockdown, Michelle, I would say then yes, you should be able to take your stuff and work from home so that we can keep the continuity going.
That's all I have then.
Thank you. Were there any other department heads? Dave?
Yeah, nothing. We're going to continue as business as usual, we don't have much of a choice.
Right.
Nope, sounds good. Thanks, Dave. Donna, you did have a comment in there? Or Miss Taylor, excuse me, I'm sorry. Tate?
Nothing to say from me.
Okay. Donna, you had a question in there earlier?
Yeah, actually, I had a few, but Lynn asked all but one. In the reporting illness, do not enter a Hardin County facility if you have been diagnosed or tested positive. I would question that one because you can't be diagnosed without a test, and it's still rather difficult to get a test. Therefore, until you can actually get them, it is proposed that you have the virus. Would that be something we would, you would want to adjust in here?
I think we can take that in consideration. Obviously, we're going to bring this back next week again with a few changes. But yeah, we'll let Daryl take that as consideration, as how we'd want that worded. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are we going to determine essential travel? Like, am I, as the department head, decide what's essential, or do I have to get all my stuff, like, approved by you guys? Like, for example, I have a meeting, I have a board meeting tomorrow at Ackley that when we started, we said that I would go and continue to do those things, so I would assume that's essential.
Is it a group, is it a group larger than 10?
No, there's only going to be five of us.
And it's no more than 50 miles from Eldora, right?
Right. Well, unless, yeah, I'm right in the middle of it, you can be mapping too, and so you kind of have to be in the community to map, but I don't talk to anyone when I'm there.
I don't, do you want that?
So, mind, do I have the authority to say this is essential travel? Or do you want me to send you guys an email for you guys? And same thing with Jessica, she has to go out and do water testing. Does she need to get every trip approved by you, or does she-
I believe as a department head, you should know whether or not it's essential enough that you need to travel to, to come to the Board of Supervisors for every permission for both your department heads, along with any other department that works under us. Obviously, by ourselves, we can't give you that decision. Obviously, by ourselves, we can't give you that decision anyway.
Right. I just want it to be clear.
So I believe you need to be the department head and decide whether or not it's essential enough to go to or not.
Right. Okay. I just want it to be clear.
And if there are things that you can attend by phone or Zoom...
Right.
We would encourage that.
Always consider that, I would say, but...
Matt, we missed you.
I'm good. I really have nothing to add, but thanks.
Thank you.
Lance?
Yes.
On Page 5, non-essential is defined as either traveling more than 50 miles from the employee's regular work site, which if you're a county courthouse-type employee, that'd be the courthouse. If you're maybe conservation, that might be the Calton Center. But I think 50 miles from, unless you're in one of the corners, 50 miles is going to cover you. So if you're not going more than 50, it's not non-essential. And if there's less than 10, it's not non-essential. So I think going to that meeting in Akley is going to be, would not be considered non- essential under the definition here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I got, can I try and get on that a minute? I've got two employees, one lives in Peterborough, and one employee lives in Colo. Kind of figured that in all what you've just said, Daryl, if that's where they're living, how do you normally handle that?
It doesn't, this is, to me, this is travel during work, not traveling to work. It's traveling as part of your work. So getting to work, I don't care how far you commute, this doesn't address people that commute to work more than 50 miles. It's once you get to work, you know, we don't want you to leave, you know, go outside this 50-mile radius once, from your regular work site. Your home would not be your regular work site, so this does not include commuting to work.
Sorry.
Were there any other comments? From there, I could ask if we would like to adopt one of these choices. Obviously, number three seemed to be the one everybody liked.
Yes.
This is BJ. I'd make a motion to adopt option three.
I'll make, or I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I just, I want to thank everybody for their input. I think it's important that this is a very dynamic and working document that as people come up with different questions, to please get those to Daryl so we can keep amending the document as needed.
Yep, that would be great. Any other comments? Harry, none? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is change of status for Community Services.
Let's see. I will make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Michelle Lochner as the Administrative Assistant in Community Services. It's a hiring, it's permanent, part-time, 28 hours a week, no benefits, at $16.09 an hour.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There's a, goes to 1641 at 7:120.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have a change of status for IRVM department.
I'd make a motion to accept the resignation of Luke Damison, effective April 29, 2020.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. This is Donna.
Go ahead, Donna.
Is this a position that is going to be refilled or left vacant?
I talked to Taylor yesterday. It sounds like it'll be refilled. One, we would need the weed commissioner. We want somebody in play that has the, oh, I don't know if it's licensing required, but the experience that we need, but he talked about replacing this position.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just wish him well in his new endeavor.
Yeah, it sounds like he found a conservation job, and I wish him the best.
Me, too.
Harry, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a COVID-19 update. Thomas, are you here?
Yes, I am. I'm on Dave's computer, having a little technical issue in my office. We changed computers this morning. Nothing new, really. There is a lot of discussion. First of all, probably 10,000 pieces of PPE have been delivered to nursing homes, first responders, law enforcement, the jail. So everybody right now has their required PPE, and we continue to order that on a seven-day notice. That's all the further we can go out is what is needed in seven days. That's the state's mandate. And then the other is, just a reminder, I'm getting lots of questions, and there is discussion about the governor needing to do a mandatory shutdown and all that. There really is not a feel for that across the board. And the other is, is that we need, we really need to remind people that the big picture of everybody takes responsibility, and it doesn't matter whether the governor says it or the president says it, it still comes down to the individual taking responsibility, looking outside of their own little world and looking at what, how many people they actually come into contact with in a day, and making sure that that is limited. We continue to, I continue to work through with the state on multiple issues, have some more that I'm going to push to them today, and, but the PPE supplies are adequate at this time.
Thank you. Anything else, Thomas?
No, I think we're good. Thanks, Lance.
All right, thank you. From there, I'll go to public comments.
I'd like to make one. This is Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
In connection to what Thomas just said, also remind people to maintain six feet of separation, and visual examples are the best proof.
I'm sure. Just have it...
Absolutely, yes, I was. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, this is Dave Dunn, and I'm sorry, I haven't made it to every meeting, so maybe this was disclosed. I'm just wondering if there's a timeline on explaining the new health insurance plan and how that's going to take place, et cetera?
Oh, we haven't discussed it yet. It'll take place July 1st, but as far as the timeline, we haven't had any discussion of what, how we're going to implement or change anything.
Yeah, okay. We're now 90 days from the new plan, and I'm just, it's going to be awkward because we're going to have mass meetings, you know, and this format's okay for some things. I guess we'll have to do it or a conference call, but, thank you.
No, that's good. Hey, Dave, I do have a question for you, though.
All right.
The city is doing their fogging of all their sewer systems? Or the rainwater?
Okay. I didn't know that.
Well, I thought we were getting something in the mail where they were checking the stormwater runoff into the sewer or something like that.
Oh, yes, okay.
Is that going to continue now that I have you here? Is that going to continue since they have to enter every home?
Oh, yeah, the stormwater, the, right, the sump pump inspections, yes. Well, it's definitely been postponed for a while, and I haven't talked to them, but I don't, you know, we were hoping, it was probably going to be a 90 or 120-day process, and I think, you know, for now, it's pushed off probably in, well, let's look at the start of May to start with. We'll stay with the governmental recommendations, and no, we don't want people trapesing into houses, you know, to get that done until we kind of get the all-clear. So I think we'll be off the hook for that for a while.
All right. Thank you.
Can we go back?
Michelle had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody not to panic if they haven't paid their taxes yet. The government, governor's proclamation did adjust us from not having to charge penalty until the 17th of April. So as long as they have their taxes paid by mail, postmark, online, or dropped in our drop box that is located on the east side of the entrance of the courthouse by the 16th of April, that they will have no penalty on their current March tax. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And also, there are provisions with the motor vehicle delinquencies and title transferring, so they can just call our office to find out the details on that.
Thank you. Were there any other public comments?
This is Renee. I just do want to go back and address something I said. I by no means meant that I don't feel our employees are essential. They are essential to everyday operations and whatever, but I was talking about what the government is referring to as essential employees right now, and I do appreciate everything that employees are doing to go above and beyond to continue operations at this point in time, and want to just give them a high five that they continue coming to work or working from home. And I think I appreciate, I know I appreciate that, and I think the people of the county do, too.
From there, I have no other public comments or any other business? I could ask for adjournment. Oh.
This is Taylor. I can just say something. So we had our Region 6 meeting yesterday, which is a, pretty much a pool of money we share with Marshall, Tama, and Powashie Counties. And yesterday, we approved $145,000 for the Iowa River Trail to do their work next year. And Alden will be getting $198,000 in 2023, I believe. So it's just kind of nice to see some of that money come back to our local communities.
True. That'll be great.
Michelle, did you have something else to add?
Thank you. Thank you. Next year, is that the 2021?
Yes. Yes, Dave.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the public, too, for being so, most everybody is very, been super-duper about being accommodating to what we have to do right now, and I just want to thank them for being patient with all of this, and we've had lots of kind remarks, and we've had some not-so-happy people. But overall, I just want to thank everybody for being patient with this whole situation that we all have to do and change our life. It's just caused upside-down havoc everywhere, and I just appreciate the patience of the public.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and I will go back to a comment that Becca made. Dave, this might be of interest to you. She said she'd just like to note that we will be in contact with everyone about the plan changes. They want to do a meeting in April, yet as soon as there is approval, she will update all that will be involved with the meetings.
Oh, great. Thank you. Yeah, I must have missed that. Thank you.
And BJ said, mentioned that all Iowa registered voters will get a postage-paid absentee request form in the mail, and I did hear that on the news this morning also. Sounds like we may be conducting the primary election all by absentee ballot.
Any other business? From there, I could ask for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're adjourned.